All right, you're good to go.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, June 30th, meeting of the Town Council ad hoc licensing committee at 10:00 a.m. I think we have everyone in attendance now. Is Aldo there?
Aldo's not in the audience. I will send him a text message and see if I can get him connected.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. All right. In attendance are Tom O'Connor, Pat Henry, Ex officio Kathleen Hill, President of the Town Council, Jeanne Quaglietti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council, Kathy Hood, a resident of the Islamo and member of the committee, Mike Kane, Vice President of the Town Council, and myself, and Ryan Quinby, and we're waiting for Aldo Fazio, a member of the committee, to join us.
Coming in now. Looks like Ryan's trying to pull him in now.
Yeah, I'm trying to log in. God, if you guys can hear me.
Hear you.
Good.
Ah, I hit the wrong button, damn it. Sorry, sorry. I gotta hit okay.
All right, Aldo, we're live.
Hey, there we are. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Aldo.
Hello.
How's everyone staying safe, I hope?
The only way.
All right, since I've already opened the meeting, Aldo, so and who is in attendance. I'd also like to ask permission that this meeting be streamed live and recorded for future broadcasts by Elcat, streamed live on Facebook. And I need to ask under Master General Law, if anyone else is recording this meeting in our audience, and if so, please identify yourself. Ryan, anybody out there?
You're clear.
Thank you. Our first order of business today is to discuss multiple questions that have come up regarding the status of some of our liquor license holders. The issue at hand is that we've issued liquor licenses to many establishments that have not made use of them. So the question comes up, what do we do about it? And that's the reason why we're convening the committee. The first order of business on there with regards to establishments was Redstone Pasta. And as any of us who have driven by that area have seen, doesn't look like there's a lot of activity going on. And I had got an update from Kevin Duquette that I would like to read. When I questioned him on it, it said Reston, Redstone Pasta has all the required building permits that they've applied for. Construction has been slow with this property. The owner had a lot more additional work to do on the property than they anticipated to bring the building up to code. But it looks like the completion is near with this property and final inspections are in the works. So indicated that there is progress and that things are moving forward, and I would imagine that with COVID-19, things have put a little kink in everyone's abilities to get things done. The other establishments that have come up in question are in no specific order, Frigos, Peppas, with regards to usage of their licenses, since there seems to have been no activity with the use of those licenses. And again, it begs to ask a question, what do we, as the Town Council, with all of our licenses having been issued, and we have no more available licenses to others who may make use of them, what are our plans and what policy might we put in place to deal with that issue? So I'd like to start with comments from anybody in our committee to see if they think that's a good idea to have a policy that says something in regards to how long we would allow a license holder to hold on to the license and not use it. The state, in my discussions with them, indicates that there is a process to revoke that license, but it's a lengthy process. And the steps are to hold a hearing of each of the establishments and then give them six months to make use of that license, otherwise it will be revoked. So I think it'd be good if we had something in our town policies that allowed us to address that in a more timely manner. Six months, I think, is a long time. If we wait the six months now, if we tried to do anything about it, the problem would be that it comes up during licensing reissue. So do we reissue the licenses and then deal with it in January, which would be a six month after notification at the earliest? Or do we come up with a policy now and mail it out at licensing time and deal with this issue sometime early next year? So your thoughts?
I just have one quick question. Isn't it my understanding that technically Redstone Pasta had one year? I remember there was an issue with Pasquale's when they had closed and they had produced receipts that they had done a private party within one year of closing. They were able to keep their liquor license. Now, is that true? Is there something on file that, because I know Redstone did run into a lot of, I know both his plumber and electrician, and they ran into a lot of construction issues. The gentleman that had done it before, nothing was to code, so they had to kind of start all over. Moving forward with that said, I agree with Tom, there needs to be a stipulation that, you know, you can't hold on to a license for two, three years while you're dragging your feet doing construction. I think at our last meeting, we said he was slated to open back in February, and of course, COVID hit, so I feel a little bit of leniency in that department should be kind of granted. But I think definitely moving forward, if somebody applies for a license, buys an establishment with a license, I feel six months is pretty fair to them to at least present something to Town Council that would say, I need an extension due to X, Y, or Z. Six months is a long time, but when you're dealing with sometimes contractors in the commercial industry, you know, getting a callback, or as anyone knows, if you ever did work at your house and get a contractor to show up or a plumber to show up, there's always conflicting schedules and delays. But I feel that there needs to be, again, communication is key. You know, they need to be communicating with Town Council or the ELPD, who's the licensing agents, that this is what's going on, and I, you know, I run into this issue or that issue, and I do need an extension. At that time, Town Council can vote whether they grant the extension or not.
Any other comments, suggestions?
Tom?
Yeah. Kathy?
I recollect, and Jeanne, you can back me up on this. We issued the license to Redstone almost two full years ago.
Is?
Yeah, May of 2018.
Okay. And admittedly, the gentleman was upfront that he needed to do what he would, he called the complete overhaul of the facility. And we all know from word of mouth and just seeing the establishment that that in fact is coming. I think it goes without saying that we have to, in all cases, forgive the period, March 1st, let's be generous, March 1st through right now of this year because of the pandemic. At the same time, we, I don't think it's appropriate that we allow any business to hold indefinitely a license. And it's also fair to say the gentleman or the owner is paying for that license on time every year. But when it goes unused, because the establishment is unused, it prevents the potential for another petitioner to ask for a license in that category. Right now, we're maxed out in all five of the categories that are allocated to us from the ABBCC. And you all know that that's based on population. I heard a rumor, and again, it's only word of mouth rumor, that another establishment in town would like to move from wine and malt off-premise to all alcohol off-premise. And if that's the case, let's play it differently. Redstone didn't hold the license. We'd have an opening to consider that establishment. But in this case, we have a, what I'll use the word dormant license, because the owner isn't in a position to open. And is that really fair to other petitioners in the town? Tom makes a good point that we're, just by happenstance, we're within six months of needing to go through the whole reissue process again. I think it, without a policy, it's fair for the local licensing authority to say to the attorney representing Redstone that, here's the deal, if you're not open and using on December 31st, then we are going through the process of revoking the license. Now, if I were on the other end as the owner of Redstone Pasta, that is a catastrophic scenario to be in because the value of the property includes the potential for the license. So though that is a compelling decision that has serious consequences for this owner, we have to start somewhere because there's, there's no, I believe what Kevin says, that, you know, he's close to being ready for final inspection. But COVID allows that opportunity to, and I'm not being accusatory here, but it gives you that extra ability to kind of push off when you're ready to open. I think it's fair that we, that the, this committee recommend that we, his attorney needs to be approached and say, this is what the LLA is considering doing. He's got to give us a drop dead answer on, are you going to use this license? Or are you not going to open that restaurant because we won't reissue on January 1st?
Just to interject, I would do a three-month window. You've got three months to open up. If he's near final inspection, there's no reason why it should take him six months to stock inventory and staff it. I mean, within three, if, I mean, he's been closed two years, so he's hemorrhaging money. I'm sure he wants to open as soon as possible. But I feel that six months from now, or six months from the final inspection, is again, just granting him a little bit more cushion. Then I think, I think it should be allowed. It's been two years. We understand the pandemic, but from the time that the final inspection signed off on, I feel three months, 90 days is, is fair to get the place staff stocked and ready to open up.
Thank you, Aldo. Here's what I see as a concern or an issue that we'd have to deal with. The state, it was very clear when I spoke to them, the ABBCC, in that we'd have to have a hearing before we issue any kind of order for revoking the license, which we'd have, we'd have to give them six months. So we can't, we can't preempt the state. We can certainly do something more stringent, or not stringent, but less stringent, but six months is after a hearing, which means we would have to hold a public hearing in a council meeting and give them a written notice, and then in six months, if they didn't comply, that we would revoke their license.
Tom, if I can interrupt, we have to hold a hearing at the council level as it relates to ABBCC, but it doesn't have to be a public hearing as you, if you were adopting a bylaw. Am I right, Jeanne? Having the petitioner in front of us to be heard is a hearing. It'd be no different than if we were disciplining, let's say Aldo made a boo-boo, and we have to bring him forward. Having him before the council with, as the licensee of a restaurant, is the hearing to speak to the situation. But I don't believe it has to rise to the level of public hearing protocols. And I'm looking at Jeanne to...
Well, remember when we did the license regulations and that word hearing was something that you really didn't want to define?
Right.
Because you wanted to have some, I don't want to say wiggle room, but, because that was a question I had. Do you want to define what the hearing is and what the timing is? And I think as a group, you decided not to do that. And I don't know, Tom, what, when the ABBCC says hearing, if it means a public hearing or what their definition of the word is?
Yeah, I guess I could read into that a little bit in my discussions. It sounds like maybe it's not a public hearing, and that might have been my interpretation. But they're very clear that we had to give them the opportunity to come before us in a hearing to discuss the issues at hand and why, and how much time they needed, and to see if we would allow that to happen. If not, then the maximum amount of time we could get them would be six months and then process revoking the license. So again, we're still in the same position where even if we sent them a letter and held a hearing with the Town Council, that would not take place until, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have, not this meeting, but the next meeting is probably.
July, it'll be late, the last one in July at the earliest.
Right, so it'd be the last one in July, and six months from that time would bring it into January after licensing time. So do we issue the license and then revoke it?
No, you would, we don't have to. It's not automatic that you get the license issued. It can be held for a reason. I mean, you have to state it. But you can say contingent upon final approval, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, so I, I guess what's on the table is, do we as a committee want to recommend to the Town Council to vote on having the hearing to discuss this issue with the owners of Redstone Pasta?
Can, Tom, can you see Pat? He's waving.
I'd like to hear from Pat. Yeah, he's been waving.
Go ahead, Pat, sorry. You're about that big on my camera.
Thank you, Tom. Through the chair, I would propose that in view of COVID continuing and are not knowing what the situation is for the next six months, plus the state's mandate of six months' notice, that it's probably time for a motion that we simply say, and I'd like to make the motion, that I move that the, that the local LLA adopt a procedure to provide six months' notice to any establishment, and that this policy take effective, become effective July, January 1st, 2021. So we move everything to 2021, we reissue the licenses, they have six months until July, and it's done.
I second that motion.
All right, we had a motion and it's been seconded. So we need a roll call vote? So I guess that would be...
You might want further discussion, Tom.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Now, the motion's on the floor. As the motion maker, again, I would, I would repeat, we have two issues here. Maybe treating one person different than another? No, we want to try, we want to try to adopt a policy.
Right.
Policy because of these two requirements, the requirements of the state and the non-re requirements of COVID would tell me we shouldn't try to do this now. We shouldn't pick on anybody in particular. We should establish the policy and make it effective 2021.
Yes.
Now, is, excuse me, is Folgara's license still floating around? There's another one we need to address in January, so we can't crack down on Redstone, like Pat said, and without exposing the town to some form of liability, without cracking down on Folgara?
No, I think the issue in hand, although you're correct, that we deal with all the facilities that are currently holding licenses but not using them.
Yep.
So, and as I mentioned, there were a number of others that would probably fall into that category. So I think to Pat's point, though, is that what you seconded? So the motion on the, on the floor is to do the COVID-19 issues in the six months, the whole off until January 1st to take any action and give everybody the opportunity to get their businesses reopened and back in business.
Now, Pat, can we send out a notice to the establishments that are not using their, their license that effective, you know, January 1st, they're gonna have to do something with that license or it's gonna be revoked?
Well, that, that is the reason why I stated that we should adopt the policy. We should vote to adopt the policy. The policy can be announced, but it won't be effective till January.
So we would notify the people, Folgara, Redstone, all license holders?
Sure, because we adopted the policy, so yeah.
So all license holders, whether you're using it or not, will get a letter that states, if your license becomes inactive, you have six months from the date that, again, now, how do you prove the license is inactive or they're not using it?
Six months from the date of notice.
Six months from the day of notice, there you go.
I would, I would be in favor of that policy because it establishes a baseline for us. But I also think that right now, we should notify in writing the various establishments that are not using the light, the level of license that they applied for. And Figata is one of them, as well as Redstone. Jeanne, there's...
Uh, Frigos?
Frigos has an all alcohol. Now, I haven't been in Frigos, obviously, since, for the COVID. But prior to that, I can't think of a time that I was inside that business that I saw any serving for consumption on the premises, alcohol.
No, I gotta agree with you. There isn't. It's all retail.
It's all retail. And previous, that owner had the
The deli.
appropriate license to sell on premise. But to serve on premise, if that's not the owner's intent, then that, that should be, he should return that.
And get a retail, retail beer and wine, yeah.
Retail beer and wine. But, so I get backing up, so I'm not stepping all over my words here. The four or five businesses that are at issue right now should be, I feel, should be getting some written communication from us now saying that, in fact, we know that they're not using the, the level of license that they've been issued. And beginning on January 1st, you know, the, they're gonna have to come before the council and prove us, otherwise they're risk losing it. But all 21 establishments should get the letter.
There's a motion on the floor?
Yes.
And while I totally agree with Kathy, it's not germane to this motion, it's germane to the next motion, which would be, what do we do in the interim?
Okay, fair enough.
I do have one, as Kathy had said, and not to sidetrack that. If I'm not mistaken from previous meetings, we had discussed Peppas because he has the outdoor patio with the beer shop next door. And I think it came up with paint with a twist or something that had to apply for a temporary license if they were doing a paint party. And I believe Peppas came up. I know Pino doesn't serve there, but I believe he got that license. So if someone was to go to the beer shop, get a beer, and sit on his outside patio, he was covered. Now, I'm not sure if that's how the license is written, is to be utilized, but...
Even if that was his interpretation, it's incorrect in the eyes of the ABBCC, unfortunately.
I'm sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
We need to stay, we need to stay with the motion, so that we can vote one way or another, and then go and address these other important issues.
Okay, Pat, would you mind?
Just go faster.
Yeah, Pat, would you mind, would you mind restating that?
I move that the, I move that the LLA adopt a policy providing six months' worth of notice to any establishment that the LLA determines is not using their license. Such policy to take effective January 1st, 2021.
Okay, so that motion has been made, and Aldo, that's the one you seconded?
I second that motion, yes.
Okay, so since we're via Zoom, we need to take a roll call vote? So, Jeanne?
I'm a non-voting member.
Non-voting? Mike?
Yes.
Aldo?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
Kathy Hood?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Kathy Hill is ex officio, so she's not voting as well. So it looks like that passes unanimously. And I think we can now move on to the second discussion that Kathy brought up and see if we can get a motion on that and do something with that one.
Is a motion necessary?
Don't know. I think it was just a discussion, but Kathy, did you want to make a motion?
I don't know if we, well, we, Jeanne, how many at issue here, if we add all of them up in all the categories? Four or five?
So you're looking at establishments that have licenses that don't use them?
Correct.
Peppas, Frigos, Redstone.
And what about, what are we doing with?
Well, Figaro's, they're in the middle of a transfer.
Yes, that's right. That's entirely, it's a hybrid of this situation. They are in the process of a transfer that, and they have legitimately, back in the fall, late fall, come before the council with the new owners. And it was our understanding that both attorneys who were present were, they were on the cusp of the transfer. Whether or not that has happened, I can't speak to that. Perhaps in that case, it just bears good business practice on the side of the town that we reach out to them, period, to say, what happened to the transfer? What are your opening plans, et cetera? So four, we have four.
Well, Figaro's, in Kevin's email, Kevin Duquette's email to Tom O'Connor, he does say that Figaro's has not submitted any building permits. However, the architect for the new owners has been in contact with him about questions about the property. So there's movement.
And obviously, the pandemic has just put a monkey wrench in everyone's life.
Yeah, and I think that's the reason why we decided to put this off until January 1st, but send out, create a notice and send it out with a, with a policy from the town stating that if it's not, if there's no action by January 1st, then we would take the steps necessary to
Exactly.
revoke the license.
Exactly.
Okay.
Now we have a policy, we can do that.
Right. Okay.
So they would literally have to start serving, operating, using that license by January 1st?
In all cases, yes, I would say.
Based on what Pat was saying, the left six months from the letter, actually, well, if we draft it, it probably won't be until January 3rd or 4th by the time they draft a letter and get it out, right? Go ahead, Pat.
Just as a practical matter, I think it would be after January, we would then have to reach a determination at an LLA meeting that a certain establishment was not meeting the requirements. We would then send a letter and the six months would start tolling at the, for the date of that letter. Is that?
So it'd be six months from January 1st, 2021?
No, not now. It would be six months from the date of the letter, which would be after the first meeting in 2021 of the LLA.
Okay, so we're wiping out 2020s out where this is all for 2021?
In terms of, in terms of actually making a move, yes. In terms of sending a letter, you can always send a letter.
Okay, all right.
Is that because they don't pay for their license until January? So when they reapply, then we can if we find out they're still not using it, then the letter goes, so.
They have to pay before, they have to pay by December 10th.
November 10th.
November 10th.
No, December. I think it's like December 1st, it has to be in, and you get the license by the 20th.
Yeah.
Are you sure, Aldo?
Aldo is.
It's my, this is my Christmas present I pay for every year. I get it right before Christmas. For the mere fee of a liver and a kidney, so.
Wow, Jeanne, you had a comment?
I was gonna say the council's first meeting in July, and next year is like January 12th or something. But the council approves all the licenses in their first meeting in December. Most people have paid Kathy Hood by then, so they're, they're all paid up by the 1st. They don't get the license, actually.
Now, how do we know if an establishment is not utilizing their license? How do we determine that? I mean...
So Kevin Duquette inspects, and he inspects the buildings every year, and I can't issue a license through the LLA without the building inspector. And it's through his office that he's been told by the owners, point blank.
So Pino could come up and say, yeah, I served beer and wine on my patio this past weekend. Would you request receipts? Like, how do we, this is something, again, that, are we opening, and again, I mean, the straight opening Pandora's box, but, you know, I present a receipt that I did a party back in February. you know, I, I present a receipt that I did a party back in February, therefore I'm utilizing my license. Pat, go ahead.
All we would be doing is, is holding a hearing.
Yes.
The determination as to whether or not they are or aren't in compliance would be up to them to present evidence at the hearing and up to us to decide, no, that's bogus, or, yeah, that makes sense. I, I believe.
Right. According to the information, uh, from the ABCC, the town council, the LLA, acting as the LLA, would have the authority to have the hearing, listen to, uh, the establishments, uh, uh, you know, petitioners, and decide whether or not we want to issue the license. So.
But I guess the question becomes, how do we know that they're not utilizing it? Uh, am I missing something? I know you said Kevin does the inspection, so, so Kevin goes to Frigos and doesn't see any bottles of vodka for sale, or doesn't see anyone having a cocktail. Does that mean that they're not utilizing their license?
He, he was told they, they have it in case they need it.
Gotcha, okay.
So, and I, I have a comment too about, um, you know, moving forward in the future, when the LLA issues new licenses or transfer of a license to. It should be understood somehow in writing that.
Fazio is gonna help you.
Transferred license is the biggest, biggest concern by the town.
That's not me.
Not me.
Okay, so, uh, we, we have a motion that we've accepted, uh, to, uh, create a letter to send out to all the establishments notifying them that we have, uh, a policy now that effective January first, if they are not making use of the license, that the process will start to revoke the license. And, uh, we, you know, have the hearing to take it from there.
Who made that motion? Was that Kathy? Was that your original?
That was Pat.
Yeah, Henry.
Okay. So I guess we can table any further discussion on this, and, uh, I, the, what's at that, what's on the table now is the committee needs to take a vote to recommend to the town council that this occur. And I don't know if that was part of Pat's, uh, motion.
Jeannie had sent an email that we needed to vote on something from back in November?
The minute.
Well, let's, let's deal, let's deal with this, Aldo, first, so.
Sorry.
So, Pat, is part of your, part of your motion, uh, does that include recommending to the town council that this occur?
That what occur?
That the letter be sent out to all the establishments?
No, no, not at all. That was Kathy's motion, which I, which I approve of, but it's not, that's not the motion I made. Jeannie, can Jeannie read, read the motion back?
You mean the first motion that was already approved?
I, I think I'm confused with, are we talking about the same motion or two motions or one?
That's Kathy's idea about the letter, and then you were deciding whether you want it to be an official motion or not.
I think two things, that we, you, you, you approved unanimously Pat's motion that the, uh, LLA should adopt a six-month policy. That's the recommendation from this committee. So now it needs to go, uh, onto a council agenda to, to, and somebody from this committee should report out on it, and then it would be up to the council to vote that up or down.
Right.
At that point, I would think that it's inherent in that vote that all licensees would get a letter stating that this is what the council has done, because there is concern for, uh, holders that are not fully using their, uh, licenses. And the, and honestly, the people that hold them will know who they are.
Yeah.
Right.
I agree.
Okay, so, uh.
Jeannie, can that, not, I'm sorry, Tom, to jump over you.
I was gonna say, as, as, uh, as the chair, I'll take that on, and at the next, uh, council meeting, bringing this up and ask for the council's vote and support to adopt this s- six-month policy.
Do you want that on the next meeting or the meeting after that? Because this is fourteenth, you've got the budget hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the one after that.
Blood twenty-eighth, yeah.
Hi, Mike, you've been quiet down there. How you doing?
Thinking about lunch.
We're always thinking about lunch.
I know. The, uh, I, I think, are there any more, uh, discussions or comments on those issues before we move on?
I, I'll just make one comment, because I think everybody else has covered, uh, ninety-nine percent of the details. But while these licenses sit dormant on a shelf, it obviously starves the state and starves the town of Esong Meadow of meals tax and revenue that could be used. So we don't want these licenses sitting there dormant, and we really don't know what the plans are of the owners of these establishments until they come forward. They could be just holding the license while they, uh, rebuild the business with no intentions of opening, but marketing that business with a license. So.
To be honest, point.
It's about very valid point.
Yeah, I agree.
So otherwise, I think everybody else had good comments, and I agree with everything that's taken place.
Okay. Uh, the, the next issue I'd like to bring up is, uh, we had, we, we've been asked, uh, at, at least I have, I'm not sure if any of you have been approached, to, uh, define what an entertainment license with a liquor license means. We're starting to issue many licenses with entertainment licenses, as we've done recently with, I, sorry, I can't remember the name of, of the, uh, establishment, but the new, uh, Mexican restaurant taking over where Figaro's is. Uh, and, uh, Bill in Apolatano has advertisements out about, uh, live entertainment. What does that mean? Uh, so my question here to the committee is, do we need to define better what that entertainment license means? And, and differentiate between a three-piece, uh, band, uh, a DJ, a, a full band, uh, and so on? Anybody's comments on that?
Does it matter? I remember when Fusion opened up, they had a guy on a piano, and the town was up in arms about the entertainment license. Um, what's the difference if a guy, I mean, video games are considered an entertainment license as well?
Automatic amusement.
Oh, sorry, amu- amusement, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, you know, whether you have three guys singing a cappello or a five-person band, I don't think entertainment is entertainment. It's something for the customers to enjoy. Are we splitting hairs by limiting certain, you can only have one guy singing versus three people band?
Well, Kathy, you may remember, uh, recall, but probably a, a year ago or so, uh, we had a discussion with Figaro's, uh, about upstairs, downstairs, and the amplified music, uh, having a full band, uh, with a DJ and the music and the loud and the, the noise that, uh, accompanied that.
I do, but, um, I recall the, the discussion, but I don't recall the specifics of it. That was more, um, trying to restrict the location that I think he had the entertainment in versus the type of entertainment.
Okay, so.
And as it relates to entertainment, in the document that this committee put forth to the council around offenses, entertainment such as live dancers of any gender would, um, and I don't mean, you know what I mean. Trying to be politically correct here and not violate anybody.
So I can't have thunder down under at my restaurant?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
I don't believe dancing with your partner to live music. I mean, uh, pole dancing, whatever, let's just say it as it is. Uh, that's prohibited.
Okay, Pat, Pat has a question?
My question is, where, where did this request come from? And is there a motion to do something that we can discuss, rather than discuss and then try to decide why we're doing this and where it came from? One of the, one of my pet peeves since I've been involved in watching the council back in Kevin's day even, was we spend a lot of time discussing things, but we don't really have a topic, a fixed motion, a, a suggestion on the floor. So therefore, the discussion goes all around Robin Hood's barn, and we end up taking much more time than we would if we were looking at what it is, why we're, why are we being asked to do this? Who's asking it? And what is the suggestion that the chair would pose to this committee to discuss and vote on?
Okay, the, the, the question that, uh, I, I was approached and asked, uh, about had to do with, uh, Bill and Apolatano. Uh, they, they have an outside patio now, which is in effect until November first, and they have live music out there on, on Sunday afternoon, which is allowed. Uh, but they're in a residential neighborhood. So, uh, the music, from what I'm hearing, can get fairly loud. And the concern is that when the Mexican, uh, restaurant opens up, even though we've limited, and I believe we have limited them to a three-piece, uh, you know, uh, group on the patio, any amplification, I believe, is not allowed. But I don't know if that's a policy.
So what is the suggested policy to deal with that? Because we do have police, we do have noise ordinances and other ordinances that could be used. Are we going to go further and adopt some kind of policy that this committee could discuss?
Well, my understanding is November first, the, the outdoor patio ceases, correct?
Yes.
So if we're gonna make a policy, it's gonna, in November, it's gonna expire anyway, so.
Also, the outdoor dining has to be shut down by ten, uh, which sort of goes in hand in hand with the noise ordinance in town, right? That.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, I, yeah. And as, as far as defining the entertainment, um, when people apply for an entertainment license and they go before the council, that's when they get into the nitty-gritty of what kind of music, and no amplification and all that. But on the license itself, it talks about the state requirements, no nudity, and it, and it refers to the MGL and everything. But as far as the specific definition of entertainment for the ones that have the annual licenses, it's all done on the application itself on their, in their folders.
Okay, Jeannie, so the application would have what was voted and approved? Whether it was, uh, an orchestra to go to the extreme or a three-piece?
Right, it shouldn't be. And there's not many that have them. There's like a half a dozen or something that have them.
Right.
I don't think any really have the outdoor entertainment, like Bentley's or, uh, over here, Center Square, they really don't have entertainment.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, bring it up because it was asked of me. Uh, and at, at Fazio, uh, Aldo Fazio brings up a good point in that November first would be the cutoff anyways. So if we did anything, it would only be for a short time. Uh, and Jeannie indicates that it's on the license what's allowed. So it's on the license and it's been approved by the council at that time, it's probably a moot point. So, uh, I guess it's not worth any further discussion.
Okay. Excuse me, Tom, you said there were Sunday afternoons, they were having the pianos there too? The piano? It was a Sunday afternoon?
It just says live entertainment, live music.
Because I had talked to the manager there when I gave them the license, and I, I did tell her that, uh, I was talking with the state, because Sunday entertainment licenses have to be approved by the state for the blue law stuff. So I finally heard back from the state Thursday, and they said that, uh, any establishment that wants to use outdoor entertainment on their temporary expanded premises can just use the regular Sunday entertainment license, so.
Okay.
Just as an aside.
Thank you. I think it's just, you know, what's going on is more people are home now because of COVID nineteen. So, uh, obviously, they're hearing things that they haven't heard in the past, uh, being homebound, uh.
Lot of Karens, as they call them, a lot of Karens.
I think I would have been hearing piano music in your backyard on a Sunday afternoon.
Yeah, so.
I would in mind, I mean, what about the people that listen on Wednesday nights to the show music at the high school, the rotary band? You know, they, they cut out at eight o'clock, but it's no different. I've never heard anyone say, that rotary club music's really gotta stop. I mean, yeah, at eleven-thirty at night, I don't want to hear music.
Right.
But at, if Jeannie said the ordinance cuts out at ten o'clock, I feel ten o'clock is a fair time where, I understand it's summertime, but most of us have our air conditioners going, so that's gonna drown out the music anyways.
Okay.
Yes, our windows are gonna be open, so you are gonna hear some of the music. Um, I'm sure there's people that maybe work nights or days and they're sleeping at night, so I could see a few people getting ruffled feathers, but I don't feel it's, like you said, Tom, it's, it's necessary to make a motion about it now. Um, being that in November first, it's gonna all end anyways, so.
Yeah, okay, so we'll put that.
Uh, Jeannie, is there any talk of them extending? Now, let's say COVID continues in April, what happens now? Are they gonna, is that something separate that they'll address at that time if they're gonna reissue more permits?
I don't know. I, I don't, I don't think they'd go, be on November first. Um, I have no idea. I mean, COVID thing is a day-to-day. I don't know what they would do.
Now, what happens to the establishment like Bentley's or Villa that put a ton of money into building a patio? What happens next year when they come to town council and says, we'd like to apply for outside dining such as Donardo's, Center Square Grill, Patsy's? How do we, I mean, we're gonna have to address that.
If it was a permanent outdoor seating, they'd have to apply for an alteration of premises. It's an ABCC application. It would have to go to local licensing authority, then be approved by the ABCC.
Got you. Because we've already have some in town that are already established, so we have to prepare ourselves that, you know, Villa, who spent a ton of money building that patio, may come to the town or the state and say, I want to do outdoor dining April till October.
But once they have, um, full capacity inside, they're gonna need those parking spaces again, so.
Don't they share with, uh, C-Mart?
I don't know. I would think so.
Because my, like, my lot is, I'm privately owned, so I'm allowed one car per three people for occupancy. Bill Collins, because he shares his lot, is allowed one car per five occupants, if I'm not mistaken. When you share a lot, so that doesn't seem fair, where I own my property, but I'm losing two people. My restaurant would never hold them.
I think that's the building commissioner. When Kevin looks at that, I believe that's what he looks at, the zoning and the parking and all that. And, you know, to go back to who's that existing, uh, permanent outdoor, like Bentley's, like Center Square, right on their application and their license, it says how many square feet, how many seating capacities. They have to stick with that. Nick, November second, they're gonna have to go back to that.
Yeah.
And take.
But who's to say that in April, I don't, now, I have twenty-seven parking spots. So I could say, okay, I have enough to do a six-person patio when I want to invest the money. If my parking coincides with occupancy and I have extra, I could theoretically apply for an outside permit.
Yeah. All right, if, uh, thank you, Aldo, for your comments. Pat, go ahead.
Uh, do we have other, do we have other co- topics? Because we really need to.
Yeah, so.
And I, I think all those concern is real, but it, it doesn't relate necessarily to the liquor license authority today.
Not what we're talking about. The last order of business would be, uh, that's something that just, uh, came up is, I guess there were minutes, there was a meeting held in November, and, and minutes need to be approved for that. Uh, and, uh, in attendance at that meeting were, uh, Pat Henry, Aldo Fazio, Kathy Hood. Uh, absent were Mike Kane and myself. And I'd like to make a motion, or have someone make a motion to accept the minutes of that meeting, so we can put that one to bed. That was November fourth, twenty nineteen. If anyone's had enough opportunity to look at it.
Yeah.
Kathy, did you make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion to accept the minutes of November fourth's meeting.
I second that motion.
Okay, motions are made and seconded, and those in attendance, please, uh, vote, Aldo?
Yes.
Kathy Hood?
Yes.
And Pat Henry?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, we have a majority vote of those committee members in present, uh, that were voting for that. And that's all I have on my list of discussions. So I'd like to entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn.
Do you need another meeting or no?
Um, I think we can, uh, first talk with the council and then set up a meeting.
Okay.
I second Tom's motion. I second Tom's motion to the adjourn.
Okay, so, uh, the motions have been made and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Yes, aye.
Yes.
Aye, 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 okay. Aye.
Yes, yes.
Mike Kane, good.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at ten fifty. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Love you all, miss ya.
Love you all.